Item two, discussion for possible action, the approval regarding a scoping letter to the BLM's Robinson Mine Expansion, EIS, Jeremy.
Yeah, for the record, Jeremy Drew, project manager with Resource Concepts. So what we have before you is a draft for your review and possible action. Again, this is a scoping comment on the BLM for the Robinson Mine Expansion, based on my review of all the materials that have been provided thus far. Keep in mind, this is the beginning of the EIS process, and so really what we're trying to do is identify any issue we think should be analyzed in EIS. And so I'll just step through quickly on kind of how we put the letter together. The first opening paragraph really states, I think, what you all stated in your last meeting, the county's support for the operation and moving forward with their proposed action. And then we specifically asked that they fully analyze the positive socioeconomic impacts that the mine has had to the community. And you'll notice we kind of picked out a few key bullets for that. And then just made the offer to provide additional data if necessary. And we kind of speak specifically to the proposed action and in terms of extending the life, a resumption of mining in Liberty Pit, and then two of the other key actions they're looking at, which is construction of the Keenway Waste Rock Dump and then modification of the Drew Wash tailings facility. Just to note on this, they have an alternative where they would do, basically ban the North Tripp Waste Rock Dump in lieu of the Keenway Waste Rock Dump. And I just say, you know, if that works out better for the mine and minimizes impacts, you know, the county's good with analyzing that. People know that, totally see the draft, EIS. So just to put a note in, as far as consistent with our previous approaches, we cite the 2018 White Pine County Public Land Policy Plan. I give them a link where they can look at that. And then we specifically pulled out the sections of that plan that support kind of what we want to see in analyzing any of the projects. And then we close out, basically what I did is I just went through the public policy plan, looked at issues of key importance to you all, and tried to just put in a plug for which items should be analyzed so that they're consistent with our policy plan. I don't think there's anything outlandish here, it's just a matter of kind of calling to attention those areas that we feel are important, or you all feel are important as a county. And then offer additional input, reach out to the FLAC, water advisory committee, or the advisory board, and manage wildlife in addition to this commission. I mean, for some reason, they need additional information or input as they go through the process. And then just our close and CCs to the FLAC, KGHM Robinson, and then I'm happy to CC any other groups that you think appropriate, be appropriate, one that is in the advisory committee. That's in a nutshell summary of our draft letter, and we're open to accept the questions or thought.
Anyone got any questions to Jeremy on this scoping letter? Anyone?
Sounds good to me, Jeremy, thank you.
Yeah, well-written, thank you, Jeremy. Travis, did you want us to go over to the water advisory board?
Uh, probably what, Kurt, if you just throw a CC on there to them, Jeremy?
You go.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? And I'll look for a motion to approve the scoping letter to the BLM's Robinson Mine Expansion.
Motion to approve the letter.
Motion by Lori.
Second.
Second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, pass unanimous, thank you. Item three, discussion for possible action, the approval regarding the work order amendment for the development of comments to the BLM's Nevada State Office targeting grazing in the Great Basin Draft Environmental Assessment. Jeremy?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'll just be excluding myself from this one, being my family has grazing cattle and so forth, but I don't know if this will change anything, but just to be on the safe side, I'll be abstaining.
Okay. Travis will abstain. So Jeremy, would you go ahead and give us your comments on this?
Yeah, for the record, Jeremy Drew, project manager with RCI. This is an item that we've been tracking for quite some time for other counties, as well as the N Forest State Grazing Board. Essentially, what the BLM is looking at doing here is providing an avenue for grazing permittees to target and get a special permit for targeted grazing on invasive weeds like sheepgrass. I think this fits very well with the approach to wildfire management you all have in your public land use plan. One disclosure, we do also work for the N Forest Grazing Board. I don't see a conflict of interest here in that, I think we're aligned with pushing for the flexibility provided here, which is consistent with their position. There is a series of four public scoping meetings coming up, one starting this evening and then two on Friday. This is due on July 8th, so the thought would be to draft a letter for your approval at the next commission meeting, and then just turn it around and turn it in. And then I think that is pretty much it. There are some efficiencies of scale here in that we have been tracking this prior, so we have a pretty good sense of what's in there. I think it's a good project, I think it fits well with the county's public lands policy plan and where you all are in terms of multiple use and using grazing as an efficient and effective tool. Happy to answer any questions, Chairman.
Anyone got a question to Jeremy on this?
I'd like to make some comments.
Lori?
This, when I first was appointed by the governor, this was just starting to, from Reno. In White Pine County, I became the representative as a cooperating agency, and I had asked Jeremy because the N Forest Grazing, where they were going to be having Kathleen Dreyer's, that's her name, Kathleen Dreyer?
Correct.
Representing BLM, she was going to be on the telephone with the N Forest Grazing. That meeting was also the same day as county commission meeting, so I was unable to attend it, but, so I asked Jeremy if he would listen in on it. So he was able to kill two birds with one stone in regards to that. So I just want to let you know that we are cooperative with the BLM in regards to this targeted grazing, and we do have a local ranching outfit, you all these are participating in this, so I just wanted to add to that.
Any other comment on this? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the work order for the targeting grazing in the Great Basin Draft Environmental Assessment.
Move to approve.
Motion by Shane.
Second.
Second by Lori. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, and one abstention, that would be Travis. Item four, discussion only regarding natural resources and public land issues being tracked by RCI, Jeremy?
Yeah, for the record, Jeremy Drew, project manager with RCI. Chairman, this is kind of a discussion-only item, and I wanted to thank Gary for the kind words and public comment and maybe bring up his point toward the bottom of the list. But this is something I think each time I come to the commission, I'll probably just go over with you, because it gives us kind of a sense of items that we've covered and items that may be coming down the pipe towards us. I'm not going to review what we've already done and what we've approved. Obviously, in June, Robinson is done and the targeted grazing item, we're going to try and get done by June 30th, so it's wrapped up under this contract here. There are a couple of future items that we're tracking, the U.S. Forest Service Greater Sage grouse objection period is still pending. If you'll recall, the Forest Service was lagging a little bit behind the BLM, and so while the BLM is under a lawsuit and injunction on their plan, the Forest Service is still trying to work out their forest plan amendment. So that's something I potentially see coming forward in the near future as we get towards the latter half of the summer. And then the H.T. National Forest is looking at a prescribed fire categorical exclusion. This one may not be as critical, and listening in on the FLAC meeting last week, Jose Noriega touched on this and basically said, for as proactive as they've been on their NEPA process, they really aren't going to need a categorical exclusion. So this may be one that we keep on the radar, but maybe won't be that critical when it comes up. In terms of meetings, I was able to attend the FLAC meeting via phone as well as the advisory committee or the advisory council. We did have a representative that listened in on the N Forest State Grazing Board meeting a couple weeks ago down in Cali Inn. They had a very productive meeting, again, talked a little bit around statewide grazing plan. The NACO Public Land and Natural Resource Committee is coming up on June 25th, so I guess that's tomorrow here in Carson City. We typically listen in on that for any kind of big national or state items that the state's tracking, and then the legislative plan is scheduled for July 22nd. So I'll pause at this point and just ask if anyone wanted a quick update for any of those meetings, or if they had any items or meetings that they think we should be tracking that maybe aren't on our list at this point.
Anyone? Gary has certainly commented on your great work, and the county really appreciates what you're doing, and I think continuing on the path that you're doing for everyone on natural resources, it's a real asset to the county, I believe. And so that being said, and no one else saying that was a discussion item, so if no one else has something to add, we move on to the next item.
Do you, Chairman, maybe before you move to the next item, just if I could address Gary's other piece of his comment briefly?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so we did have a question that came up a little bit from FLAC and more directly through the Water Advisory Committee, and that was if they need some sort of assistance through their committee, how they would go about doing that. And basically, what I told them is that I would check in with the commission and get back to them, but that my understanding was any work orders would need to be approved through the commission like it has been today. And so my thought is to participate through act and Water Advisory Board meeting next month, and maybe what I'll do is just provide them an example of the work orders that we've processed so far, so they have a sense of how to put that together. And then if they have a specific request, I'll work with Commissioner Carson to make sure we're comfortable processing that and moving it forward to this commission. That's kind of what I see as the process. Basically, they would make a request, we draft the work order, and when we present it to the commission, we just made clear that it was recommended by one of the committees before we get into work. And I know it's a little cumbersome in terms of turnaround. So far, we've been able to make it work. BLM's come out with a lot of thirty-day comment periods. The targeted grazing one, for example, the, you know, the comment period ends the week before the FLAC meeting, which is unfortunate. It's just a function of, you know, the thirty-day comment period and the restrictions around making sure you meet the open meeting law. I think we're going to have that, and I don't know that there's a way around that all the time, but I think the item that the Water Advisory Committee requested isn't going to be quite as time-sensitive. Just some general thoughts on maybe how that works going forward if we get a request from one of the committees.
I wanted to add to that, that normally when this is done, we have questions or comments, we also include Brian Pyle in our emails, so that, I mean, we're trying to cover all our bases. And other than that...
So you're good with adding Brian Pyle to your communication?
He's already there.
He's already on there.
Okay. Anybody else got anything on this? The item is just a discussion item. Hearing none, we'll move forward to item five. Item five is discussion for possible action, the approval regarding RCI's 2020-2021 Master Services Agreement for Professional Services related to natural resources and public land issues. Jeremy?
For the record, Jeremy Drew, project manager with Resource Concepts. Chairman, just a quick thank you to you and the board for having faith in RCI to help you with your public lands and natural resource issues. And it's been great to get engaged with some of your committees in this commission and get back up to speed quickly with what all White Pine County has going on. It's a great place to be and a great workplace to work, and we've appreciated working with you the last three months. As far as what we've put together for our master services agreement, we just wanted to make sure we didn't have a break, knowing that we're coming up against the end of your fiscal year. And so what we've put together is essentially a copy of the agreement that we have put in place, I believe, in April. Essentially, it runs from July 1st of 2020 through the fiscal year, so through June 31st next year. As far as the budget, at this point, we put in $25,000, which as I understood, as well was approved through the budgeting process. I know there's contingency, I think, as well, but at this point, our thought is to start with the 25, and if we have enough work to get into that contingency, we can adjust at that point. Other than that, I don't think there's any other changes from the agreement that we're already working under, the process, we're worth the same. And as you'll see, the very next item is the first work order for, you know, coordination and meetings and all those minor work requests. So again, if we don't have a break in service going forward. Happy to answer any questions.
Elizabeth, we're good with what Jeremy said as far as the budget goes and moving forward with this, and the contingency and everything.
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. So with that being said, Elizabeth's input, I would ask for a motion to approve RCI's 2021 Master Services Agreement.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis?
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, pass unanimous. Our last item, item six, item six is discussion for possible action, the approval regarding a task order amendment number one for 2020-21 contract for coordination, communications, minor work projects, requests, and project management. Jeremy?
For the record, Jeremy Drew, project manager with RCI. Again, this mirrors what we've had in place previously for phase one, this covers our coordination and communications, so any coordination with Commissioner Carson or this board, minor work requests, you know, if it's something that's going to take less than a couple hours, we can just get it done under this for the sake of expediency, and then, you know, minor project management, making sure we're providing regular reports as to our budget and everything else. We have programmed at this point, well, $2,000 to start with. Our burn rate for the first three months, our existing contract has been right around a thousand. I think that's a high, just given that we have a lot of projects coming up with BLM and then a lot of coordination here on the front end of our contract. But I think that's going to give us enough room to get through the next fifth year. And again, you know, this covers an awful lot of our work and just keeping communication with you all and your committees and a lot of the issues going on across the state. So again, happy to answer any questions.
Anyone got a question, Jeremy, on this, on the task order? Okay, hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve a task order amendment number one for the 2020-2021 contract.
Move to approve as presented.
Motion by Shane.
Second.
Second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Thank you, and that'll do it for you, Jeremy. Again, we appreciate what you've done, and I would ask any other commission to make their comment on it, but thank you for your reports and look forward to moving forward with RCI. I think we're on the right track.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thanks so much, Jeremy.
Okay, thank you all, have a wonderful day, and thanks again for your support and allow us to work for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we got a couple minutes here, so we're going to go to page three. Item two was Travis, going on, Vice Chairman, A is a discussion for possible action. Due to complaints of current tenants, revisit the possibility of going out to bid on hangar two at the airport in its entirety, rather than the current setup, which is per plane with the option of nightly rental if space is available.
Travis, so what happened here is us and gentlemen that came to the clerk's office and pulled ready to meet, but they, in that hangar, they fit three planes and they ended up renting all three spaces. And then I was at Lance sending the contract and everything in there, and it specifically says, you do realize that if you don't have a plane in there and someone comes for a night or whatever, we can stick a plane in there. Well, anyway, they came, and there was a helicopter in there, just happened to be for overnight, and they, I guess, didn't get the concept, or I don't know, I think they thought if they had all three spaces, that for some reason that gave them the whole entirety of the hangar. Anyway, so I think each plane is 55 bucks a month, so that's 165 bucks a month that we're getting right now, and it just always keeps seeming, seems to come up an issue out there, so just wanted to get the board's opinion on, we could just put this out to bid at slightly higher price and have someone on there long-term and not have to deal with all this or keep going, I don't really care either way, but I told the gentleman I put it on the agenda, get your guys' thoughts.
We heard from Mr. Costner today, his opinion on how to do the competitive bidding based on what Mr. Hughco paid, and we increased it 20%, and nobody even bid it. In fact, I think we had a couple planes move out. So is it the desire of the board to go back out to bid, to stay the same, to go to a closed bid, to verbal bids? What would you like to do?
Personally, I'm comfortable with where we're at. I think maybe we can work on the language of the contract so it spells out a little clearer that we will be utilizing space if there is a vacancy in there at the time. When it comes to the amount of money we're taking in, whether it's the 165 for three aircraft or 230 to rent the whole facility, it's not enough money that I think it matters. I think it's still a matter of making it available to more people. When we were having the contract with Murray out there, I mean, it was not an airplane hangar, per se, it was more of a storage unit. And I just, I, as limited as we are on space availability to keep aircraft indoors, I think we need to keep our options open to keep those buildings for aircraft storage. We've got a lot of private aircraft owners here, and I think it's just important that they have a place, a safe, dry, clean place to keep their aircraft. It makes their aircraft safer and it makes it more convenient for them. And I just, I really, for the difference in money, don't see going to turning it into a storage unit again.
So do you think we should rebid it, or do you think we should just stay status quo?
I personally would like to see us stay where we're at.
I don't really have an opinion each, either way. It's just, I don't know, kind of a burden issue that see is more of a pain than anything else.
Travis, did the board have an opinion?
Uh, this all came up after their meeting, and they haven't had another one yet, and I just wanted to put it on and get this gentleman an answer sooner rather than later, so. In my discussion with Lance, he doesn't, I mean, he just does whatever we want, so he didn't really have anything to say on it. Mike's on the board, I think he wants the hangar though, so whatever. Anyway, that's...
What do you think, Mike?
I think we should let the advisory board give us a recommendation.
Yeah.
Personally, I'm with Travis, I'm so tired of hearing about this. Let's close it, put our own crap in there, because it's not worth the money. I mean, it's not about the money. I mean, every three months, we're talking about this stupid hangar.
I think at the very least, the board should consider maybe grandfathering the people that are out there, giving them a duration of time that they would be grandfathered in, and just having better contract terms to alleviate some of the problems that we're having.
Oh, and hangar one, the medics, that's all for the moment solved, and this is hangar two, which is rented by three, or two gentlemen from Vegas, three, with three planes. So it's not being used by locals at all, except if there's somebody that, you know, but they haven't put any planes, only one plane in there, so, but...
It's, the term that's problematic for me is take someone's money and give them the leased space, and then telling them, hey, by the way, if we need to use it, we can. Kind of flies in the face property law, and that's kind of the issue here. If we bid it out to three, if we bid out three spots and one guy buys all three, or one individual, it's really, that's probably the end of it, because the other pilots could have bid for those spots as well.
And we have other agreements where we have said, hey, we're going to kind of use it, we're going to do X, Y, and Z, and we're going to reimburse you. I would just love to get my hands on this agreement to try to make it more clear for everybody. I mean, obviously, the money is negligible. I think, I'll have to relook at it, I think we have the authority to do that without going out to bid, because it's kind of why they're under NRS 196 in terms of that airport space, because it's kind of unique from other county properties. So that would just be my request. Obviously, we can put it off until we hear from the airport advisory board to see what they think, but there's not a lot of money in it, but there's a lot of disputes. It takes up a lot of time, kind of dealing with this stuff. So, and the contracts are basically handwritten. I've seen like pictures, photocopies. I mean, there's some work that needs to be done out there in terms of the legality of it, and it's likely not going to, I mean, a good example is the RSVP agreement, right? Didn't change anything. We just got everything written, so it's more legal, and there's contingency in place in case we need to go in there and use that space, so that's kind of where I'm at. Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, Lori, could you put that on the next agenda for the airport advisory board? Thank you.
So what do you think, Mike? We just kind of table this, or...
It's a good motion to table it.
Okay, motion to table item eight.
Move to table.
Second.
Motion by Shane and second by Lori. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, pass unanimous. We'll do item three right now, Lori Carson, discussion for possible action, the approval to send a thank you appreciation letter to certain individuals for their support of the NDOT project in phase one. So Lori?
I think that this is important because of the fact that not the last meeting, but the meeting before, the White Pine was on the agenda, and packets had gone out, and our information was included in it. I, amongst others, wrote a letter for public comment, at which time, for reasons that nobody is sure of or know why, the item was pulled, even though the packets had gone out, and there was no public comment that was given. Come the second meeting, it's back on the agenda, we had individuals that were there to help get it back on the agenda, and those ended past. So now we have our INDOT project, which we've been working on for, ever since I was first a commissioner, to tell you the truth. And this is especially for the infrastructure that has to do with the outflow boxes, and I'm...
The drop annulists, the drainage.
Yeah, but they're the big ones so far as whatever year flood type of thing. So, that said, the individuals' names that I was given would be Michelle Mann, who is an executive assistant to the Office of the State Controller, Sandy Drumbrasky, executive assistant to Lieutenant Governor Kate Marshall, Congressman Mark Amade, and I thought it was the owner, it's Harris in Reno, and his name was, first name is Steve, and I thought it was like Esquarga, I don't know.
Squaga.
He's the executive director of Pepperdale, John Squaga.
Of Pepperdale, in the Pepperdale, okay. Anyhow, so, and I apologize about the last name, but those are the individuals that personally helped to see to it that White Pine County's project moved forward.
Anybody got objections to sending a letter to those people?
Sounds good to me, move to approve.
Motion by Travis. Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Okay, we're going to take our own time. We are now back to page two. Item B, this is a 10 o'clock public hearing. Item one is the public hearing discussion only on the intention to make inter-fund loans from the general fund to various grant reimbursable other funds in an amount not to exceed $650,500 from the general fund.
Thank you, and this is a public hearing on this item. During the public hearing, I have to make certain information available to the public, so give me just a second here to find that. If I pull that here, there it is. We didn't properly notice this public hearing in the ELE Times, and the filing information is pertinent to the public hearing. Number one, a sufficient amount of money is available in the general fund for the loans outlined in the notice of public hearing. Cash from the general fund as of June 16th, 2020 is $16,126,528. Of the $16,126,528 available, $8,126,528 is not restricted as to its use and can be utilized for the inter-fund loans. Number three, the loan of the money will not compromise the economic viability of the general fund. And number four, the loans shall be repaid within one year, shall bear zero percent interest, and payment shall be made as soon as practicable after necessary special revenue fund monies are received. So for clarification, this is something we do routinely at the end of each fiscal year, because we have certain funds that are reimbursable funds, such as our grant fund... because we have certain funds that are reimbursable funds, such as our grant funds.